Good evening. Welcome to the September 11th, 2024, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. We're going to go ahead and get started with roll call, please, Mr. Demaro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Janelle, Janelle Coker, co-lead minister from the Oceanside Sanctuary. Pastor Janelle.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. While I come from the Christian tradition, I will bless us and hopefully cover all faith in this prayer. God bless us this day, September 11th, as we remember our past as a country. And today, in Oceanside, may we be blessed with the strength and resilience to look forward to solving the challenges we face. May Oceanside remain a place where neighbors take care of neighbors and the diversity of residents is celebrated. God, may your divine presence guide Oceanside leaders, especially this city council, with the wisdom to remember the needs of our residents in light of the ever-present pull of tourism. May they protect the soul of the city and ensure that growth and prosperity do not come at the cost of those who call Oceanside home. Grant them the foresight to create solutions for the housing crisis so that all may find shelter while fostering a thriving economy for visitors and locals alike. May this city council hear the cries of residents who don't have enough to eat and make good policy decisions that stamp out food insecurity in our community. Give our leaders compassion for our homeless residents, those battling addiction, and those residents in need of mental health. God gird this city council with the foresight to be diligent to find positive solutions over punitive ones. In the face of political divides, may the people of Oceanside find common ground built on empathy and a shared purpose to shield our schools from bullying and gun violence. May Oceanside rise stronger than its challenges with leadership that serve all, residents and visitors alike, united in its pursuit of justice, peace, and well-being for all who are within its borders. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have two very special proclamations and then a very, very special guest. First, we're going to start with, this is Constitution Week, or actually, Constitution Week is coming up, and we traditionally, we have tradition here in Oceanside, to share this very, very special event with the Daughters of the American Revolution, Santa Margarita Chapter. So if you can please start coming down here, members of the DAR, Santa Margarita Chapter, yes, come and join me. Okay. So I do have a proclamation, and I'm going to be handing the, after I do the proclamation, I'll be handing the mic over. Okay. Because I think we have a little bit of a change of who's going to be speaking, right? Yes, okay. So this is proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, and that is September 17th through the 23rd. Whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, founded in 1890, petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated to the, for the observance of Constitution Week. And we're being joined by others. Thank you. The resolution was adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Public Law 915 forever guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas, bells across America is an annual celebration of the signing of the U.S. Constitution, participants gather to ring bells, much as the church bells of Philadelphia rang out when the U.S. Constitution was first signed at 4:00 p.m. on September 17th, 1787. And whereas, each year, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Santa Margarita Chapter, Oceanside, have faithfully joined the City of Oceanside in making this proclamation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week. In the City of Oceanside, and urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the farmers, of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In November 1785, two years after the war for our independence and two years before the Constitutional Convention, George Washington sent a letter to his good friend, James Madison. In it, he wrote, "We are either a united people or we are not. If the former let us in all matters of general concern act as a nation which have national objects to promote and a national character to support, if we are not, let us no longer act as a force pretending it be." Obviously, the country's leaders and citizens determined to take a united position, for the Constitution was written and ratified. The Constitution has been the guiding force of our government and able to hold our country together for 237 years, through 27 amendments, a bitter four-year civil war, periods of civil unrest, two world wars, a terrorist tack remembered today, and many years of peace and prosperity. Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, for your continued support, working with the Santa Margarita Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, to bring public attention during Constitution Week, September 17th to 23rd, with your proclamation from the City of Oceanside, celebrating our republic, celebrating our Constitution. And please accept this year's winning poster to put in a prominent place for all to see.
It's beautiful. You may take it.
And it starts with "we, the people."
Yes, "we, the people." And if you would like, we invite you and the city council, but all people, to come to Mission San Luis Rey, Tuesday, the 17th, 1:00, better be there before, because if you're there at 1:02, you're too late, for ringing of bells. The church bells will ring, and we will have small bells for community members who come in order to celebrate our Constitution.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Adele. This is Adele Lancaster. Thank you so much. And here is the proclamation, and thank you. This is, this is a beautiful, I don't know if you can see it, but it does say Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, and it is the first paragraph, "we, the people of the United States," and you know the words. I think even our young folks know the words. So thank you. Thank you. We're going to take a photograph. You hold on to that, and I'll hold on to this. Oops. That's, I got it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Give them a big hand. What a tradition, right? Annual tradition. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you much.
You are definitely on time. All right, next, we have a proclamation in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we do have a few people here to help celebrate this proclamation. Please come on down. Shema, Manny, Mike, come on down, please. And Jimmy Figueroa, yes, please come on down. So we also were planning on having our kids, who are going to be dancing Ballet Foclorico this coming Sunday, we were hoping that they'd be able to join us, but unfortunately, we're missing them. But this is a very important proclamation. It is, it is called, it is, it starts as, whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th every year, honoring the histories, cultures, arts, and contributions of American citizens and residents whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, North, Central, and South America, and the Caribbean, bringing pride to our Latino bicultural families, seniors, and youth. And whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month it is celebrated today. And whereas Latinos have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage, embodying the pioneering spirit of America today, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to faith, family, hard work, and justice. Latinos have lifted our communities and our economy as entrepreneurs, executives, small business owners, community leaders and activists, as well as farmworkers in the fields, and have made contributions in areas such as science, art, music, politics, academia, government, labor, civil rights, and sports. And whereas Latino-owned small businesses are the fastest-growing businesses in America, starting at a pace of 57% over non-Latinos. As of October 2023, Latinos own more than 5 million businesses in the U.S., contributing over $800 billion in annual revenue and an economic output of $2.8 trillion. Latinos serve with honor in all branches of the armed forces, continuing a strong legacy of dedication to our country that has seen the Medal of Honor awarded to 60 Latinos. And whereas Latinos began settling in Oceanside and the East Side community in the early 1900s, early Latino leaders included Lucy Marie and Joe Chavez, who championed the issues for the Latino community such as paved streets, sewer lines, a park, Laurel Elementary, Jefferson Junior High, and civil rights, with Lucy becoming the first Latina Latino elected to the Oceanside City Council. Pete Magaña, who was required to attend the Americanization Center for his education, served in the armed forces like many young Oceans Latino men, and after returning home to Oceanside, started the Oceanside Chapter of the American GI Forum. Victor Villasenor, a leaning author, leading author, who wrote about growing up as Latino in the Oceanside Carlsbad area. And Concha Hernandez Green, who mobilized the East Side community against violence with her Steps for Peace movement and who helped organize Partners for Healthy Neighborhoods. These early leaders created the many new Latino leaders that we have today, including Jimmy Figueroa, Manuel and Shema Navarro, and Mike Lagos, and others contributing greatly to the economic and social development and success of our city and citizens and youth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Oceanside, inviting all to the 16th Annual Oceanside Noche Mexicana event happening this coming Sunday, September 15th, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. So I'm going to go ahead and give this to Mike, who has been really leading us on a very important project, and that has to do with a mural project that is happening at Joe Badrema Park. He has really brought out so many of the youth and adults in contributing to this, I mean, everywhere in the park, except for the tables and chairs, but everywhere there is a flat surface, there are murals, basically telling the story of the East Side. And so I'd like to first pass off the mic to Mike.
So we've been working on the murals, what started off in the beginning of the year. Really brought out the community together, like a lot of the older people are coming out, people are enjoying the park again. We do like weekends on the, we do like family weekends, we come out barbecue, set up tents, and everyone works on the murals together. So it's really nice to see the neighborhood, it's like a rebirth of the neighborhood, like the art and the culture is like, you know, bringing it back. So it's good to see.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, no, I think that just being able to honor our elders and empower our youth is an important thing of our community. Latino community makes up so much of the Oceanside culture, so it's just an honor to be able to pay homage to Hispanic Heritage Month here today. Thank you.
I'd like to say that Mike is probably one of the hardest-working, most dedicated, community-oriented persons that I know. The young, the youngest children to the oldest, or just look up to him for everything in the community. He's a born leader.
And Shema and Manuel are a dynamic duo, because they, they work on Dia de los Muertos, they're also working on Noche Mexicana, and Shema is actually on the Community Relations Commission, and Manny has the For Siempre Car Club. So have you seen some of the classic cars? Might be his club that's driving around, looking really cool. Adrian, come on down. What we didn't talk about was the dance is going to be happening, the dances, the Ballet Foclorico, the food, we have at least 13 booths, food booths, and something like 50 artisan-type booths. So this is going to be really, really wonderful. We're even going to have a mariachi. So you guys got to come down, right here in the Civic Center, this coming Sunday, 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. And the organizer of it is Adrian.
So definitely want to invite the entire community out. Noche Mexicana has always been an important community event, but especially this year. A lot of the local businesses are actually launching this Sunday as new businesses, as new artisans. So it's just a really important day, especially for the local entrepreneurship. So if you can come out and support, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. So we're going to take a picture. Take a picture. Take a picture? Yes. Can I be in the middle there? Thank you. And don't forget to come out on Sunday. All right, our next very special item is a special guest, and that is our San Diego County District Attorney, Summer Stephan. Summer, yes. I've had the pleasure of knowing Summer for a few years. We both started off about the same time, she in the DA's office, me in the public defender's office, and I've, I've watched her grow into this really great position that she has now. And so I'm really proud to say that she, she's doing tremendous things for our community in the, in the county of San Diego. That includes North County, that's in her heart as well. And so she's here to tell us about what is happening, something very, very critical for us here in North County. Summer?
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and it has been a long and great relationship of trust and working on justice issues. Thank you, council members and council and community for having me here today. I'm Summer Stephan. I'm San Diego County's District Attorney. I have had the honor of having that position since 2018. And as, just as a primer to what I'm going to present on, the DA's office is your people's prosecutor for the entire county, all 18 cities, all 39 unincorporated areas. Wherever there is a child, a senior, a business that's harmed, the DA's office is there, working with your police departments and your great Oceanside Police Department with Chief Kedrick Sadler and his outstanding team. I wanted to take an opportunity to offer some education about a proposition that's going to be on the November ballot. My role here today is not to advocate, if you will, or tell anybody how to vote. That is something that's very personal, and, but it is to educate about the proposition, how we got here, and the features of the proposition that I want to bring to the community's attention, and ask you all to pay attention to it, even though it's going to be the last initiative on the November ballot. It'll be number 36, and it'll be titled, "The Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act." But despite all of the exciting things on the ballot, for us here in San Diego, this is of particular note, because it promises to allow more tools that will provide for treatment for those who are addicted to very hard and addictive drugs like fentanyl and methamphetamine that also drive crime and drive repeat and habitual thefts that are destroying our small businesses and has a ripple effect in the community. So what this proposition will do, which again, I hope that you will read it for yourself and reach your own decisions, I know this community is very smart, and you will make those decisions. I want to let you know that what happened is that 900,000 people signed a petition, and many here in Oceanside, signed a petition to put this on the ballot. And by putting it on the ballot, it was accepted by the Secretary of State, it received a title, and now it's up to the people in California to vote for it and in San Diego. And what it will do is it will bring common sense fixes to a system that's currently not working. We have a system where unfortunately, we want to give people first chances and second chances, and when they steal, you know, what was envisioned is somebody who makes a mistake, they go in, they may steal something and learn their lesson. That is not what happened. What happened is in the last 10 years, there are habitual criminals that took advantage of this law, and so that there are some individuals with multiple cases of theft just under $950. We see that products are locked up, we see that employees, and I think this was the hardest thing for me as DA, is being on the ground and talking with employees who often are women, young women, who, this is their first job, and what they're doing now is looking over their shoulder, because they are not sure what to do. They see the products going out the door, but they can't act. And when they do even look at the individual stealing from them, they get a look back like, mind your own business. I get to do this, because the law does not really criminalize it. It's a citation or a misdemeanor, no matter how many times. The law currently doesn't distinguish between a young kid who makes a mistake, who should get a chance at a misdemeanor, and a citation, and someone who's made it their living to take away somebody else's livelihood. It will allow on the third conviction that there be the ability to have either a choice of getting treatment for the root causes of drug addiction or to go to jail. It is not a mandatory prison law, it is a mandatory treatment law. The same with hard drugs of fentanyl or methamphetamine. We know that our officers, time after time, they see open drug use, and they give a citation, and the citation is thrown right in front of them, because the person knows there is no consequence for the law, no matter how many times it happens. This allows for the third time that you're convicted, to get a mandatory treatment felony. You do your treatment, it goes away, you end up restoring your life, reducing recidivism. Currently, as the mayor knows, we worked in drug courts where they have a 7% recidivism rate. Our drug courts are now half-full, because there is no incentive for someone to engage in the treatment when they have no, no additional consequence. It also addresses the plight of fentanyl deaths in our community. It is incredible that 77,000 people died across the United States from fentanyl, the number-one killer for people 18 to 45. Grieving families have asked for something more to be done. They ask for a simple solution, which is, like DUI cases, if you get convicted of a DUI, you get a warning by a judge that the next time you drive under the influence and you kill somebody, you'll be held responsible. We don't have that for fentanyl. And what this will do in this proposition is it will require a legal warning, and it will add an enhancement, if you sell fentanyl and someone dies, you get an additional consequence, something that's common sense, to be held accountable for your actions. This is a bipartisan effort, it has no party, the victims have, are not a party people, their victims from small businesses that are feeling hopeless, to whole communities, to families that have lost loved ones. And this brings a common sense, balanced approach, a solution, a path forward that will also have a large impact on our homelessness. The last data point that I want to provide as an education is that the medical examiner has told us that people who are homeless are dying at 117 times higher rate from overdoses as someone who's not homeless. So although homelessness has many causes, trauma, domestic violence, child abuse, PTSD, poverty, it also has addiction as one of the driving factors for some of the people on our streets. Currently, there's no way out of their cycle, but this law will allow them to be incentivized to seek treatment and thus save their lives. Compassion and accountability are not opposite, and in this proposition, as you read it for yourself, you will see that compassion and accountability meet right at the correct intersection that is appropriate for our community. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, I will take questions.
Any questions from the dials? Yeah. Well, thank you so much, Summer. Thank you for your work. You co-authored this, right? This Prop 36.
We're a part of it, yes.
Yes, and you reached out to, as you said, bipartisan, you reached out to all the mayors in San Diego County, and thank you for reaching out to me, and yes, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you on this. Thank you very much.
It's been my honor. Thank you so much.
I did forget closed session report.
Thank you. The city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon at 3:30 to discuss Item 1 on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations. on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations. That involves the Oceanside City Employees Association, the Western Council of Engineers, and the Oceanside Marine Safety Employee Association. Council also met on item two, litigation or their adversary proceeding involving the tort claim listed on page three of the agenda. The council did deliberate and give direction on that item, but there's no reportable action on either items one or two.
Thank you very much. Next is the consent calendar. These are items three through 15. Item number six has been pulled by staff. Mr. Navarro, are there any requests from the public to pull any of these items?
There is no request from the public to pull any of the items.
Okay, any?
I have one poll.
Okay, yes.
Item four?
Item number four.
I'd like to pull 13.
I'm sorry, which number?
13.
13, I thought I heard two. 13. All right, there's a motion. I'll go ahead and second for approval of the balance. So six has been pulled by staff, and then for discussion and action, items four and 13. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number four is accept city clerks' action minutes of the Small Craft Harbor District Board of Directors, Community Development Commission, City Council, and Oceanside Public Finance Financing Authority of the August 21, 2024 regular meeting.
So my request would just be that we add the wording to item number 29, where we talked about creating the list of homeownership and affordable rentals. Just making sure that the information around the rentals is included in the minutes, the thing is important. So that'd be my motion.
Yeah, that's a, do we need a second, Mr. Mullen? Do we need to make this as a motion then?
That's your direction, that's fine, sure.
Okay, I'll second this. All right, and no discussion, no further discussion? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 13, as staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to sign the petition and ballot on behalf of properties owned by the city of Oceanside in support of the renewal of the downtown Oceanside Property and Business Improvement District, what we call the DTOP bid.
So I have a question. So in looking at the staff report, and we got an update, the assessment to the city properties is approximately 115,000, and that is to pay for services above and beyond what we are already providing ourselves. So the city properties where we are doing the sidewalk cleaning, landscape maintenance, and any other services, we are now going to pay 115,000 above and beyond that. I just want to know what that 115 is going to go toward.
Yeah, thanks, Councilman Weiss. So the current assessment that the city is paying on our collection of properties is around 90,000, so it's going up to 115. I'll let Gamaro Escarsega from the Main Street Oceanside, who is managing the P-Bid, answer that question.
Hello, Honorable Dr. Sanchez and councilmembers. Gamaro Escarsega, Main Street Oceanside. So the money's going towards additional services beyond, beyond the city services already. So pressure washing is one of them. We're also part of the management of the security company in downtown. We also do courtesy crew. So we do all 27 days a week, actually, 365 days doing a courtesy crew out on the streets. So you do get more services above. We actually work with the city departments to make sure that we schedule in different dates so we can keep services up on, at least the property for the city. But everybody gets blanketed to the same services.
Okay, thank you. And with the expanded boundaries, has there been outreach to the new property owners to let them know what is coming?
Yes, we have continued, we're being very aggressive right now to get the outreach right now, just because of the outreach we did in the last six months, to get the sentiment of the first round when we did this. Due to that, we ended up reducing the boundaries because we're just not ready to move in that direction right now. But we continue to do outreach. We've been receiving a better response this time around than the first time we did the outreach six months ago. So I'm pretty comfortable that we're going to be meeting our benchmark to get the petitions in by September 20.
Because my concern is being that if you don't get significant participation, there won't be a third time for this because I think it expires at the end of this year, right?
That is correct.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that. Any other comments from the council, the dais? I see none, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Next is under city manager items, item number 16, which is update on Tri-City Medical Center. We have tonight another special guest, Dr. Jean Ma, but this is a special meeting today, right? Who is a president and CEO of Tri-City Healthcare District. So presentation.
Thank you so much, Mayor Sanchez, distinguished city council members, city staff. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to kind of address some questions that probably have arisen after that much-publicized potential affiliation with UC San Diego Health has seemingly come to an impasse, and I wanted to address some of that. My name is Dr. Jean Ma. I'm an emergency physician, have been in this community for 25 years, and a year ago stepped into the role of CEO. At that time, had a very clear directive and partnership with our board, publicly-elected board at Tri-City. And it was very clear that we had a shared vision for a directive. And that directive was simple and clear. We needed to do right by our community. We recognize the challenges that Tri-City's had in the past, and the challenges that district hospitals all over the state of California have. And it's very, very clear that there are certain pathways that can breed success for the future. And with the growth and the phenomenal job that you all have done with this beautiful city and the growth in North County, it's very clear that communities thrive when they have fantastic education, but phenomenal healthcare. And that's going to be a cornerstone for the future, not just for us today, but for future generations of North County residents. And so that path has to start today. And so at the time, we embarked on a discussion with multiple health systems within the San Diego community. And after a short due diligence period, proposals were made, and we really embarked on a path to bring world-class healthcare to North County. We felt it was wrong for North County residents to not have access to top-tier cancer care in North County, not have access to maternal fetal medicine in North County. There is no reason why North County residents should have to travel to La Jolla and 40, 50 minutes of travel in order to access care. And so that was our perspective. At the time, UC San Diego put together a proposal that really blew our minds. We were very excited about that future, and it really was going to achieve many of the things that we had hoped. The goal was to essentially turn over the district to someone that we would entrust as the steward of healthcare for the future of North County. And we were very excited about that. Unfortunately, fast forward nine months later, it became clear that after they had requested that the proposal change significantly from, we'll take on all of Tri-City, we'll take all of the risk, but we'll also invest significantly, we'll bring back labor and delivery, that changed dramatically. But our board did not say, yeah, we're going to stomp our feet, you said you were going to give us this, and we're going to walk away. No, our board was determined to find a path forward. But after multiple months, it became clear that we were too far of an impasse. And what had been day one would be a transition to UC San Diego Health became a five-year path in which our employees would not transition to UC San Diego Health. The financial forecast did not have labor and delivery in it, and so it was unclear when that would open. And it's not to say there was no plan to open it, it just wasn't in the forecast. The biggest piece of this is when you do a transition like that, there need to be certain assurances. If you're not going to take liability on day one, there have to be assurances that you cannot put the district at risk and find residents of North County without access to care because district hospitals are closing. And it was really important that this, our board, get those assurances. And without that, in the agreement, they became particularly uncomfortable with, you know, maybe trust or faith. And so as such, at that point, we decided, given the fact that our journey had taken us from a position where we were a distressed hospital a year ago, to the point now where we are fortunate to be, today, this month, we will have recorded our eighth consecutive profitable month. And in the nonprofit sector, it's not profit. It's really money that goes back to the community. Every dollar goes back to the community. So I want to share with you that today, we are in that position to be able to do some of things, take a step back. And whether that ends up being with UC San Diego Health, I will say that our current position has really garnered the interest of multiple health systems. And our future still is with another health partner, whether it be UC San Diego or someone else. But our future is going to be there. We are investing today in Tri-City. We are investing in our employees. Today, we finished a bargaining session. Our agreement with SEIU does not expire for another year and a half, but we asked them to open the agreement, open the CBA for the one purpose of increasing salaries. Why? We need to do right by our employees, and when we do right by our employees, they will do right by our patients. And that is our commitment to our community. But we still believe that the massive, significant investments and capital investments that need to occur to grow service lines and provide care for North County are only going to come with a bigger health system. And so that partnership will come, it just is a little bit delayed. So I want to reassure you that that has not changed. We are fully committed to that, and our board is committed to that. So for today, I will just close by letting you know. Again, we've opened that conversation, supporting our staff. We've started investing in our hospital again. You will see our psychiatric health facility is due to complete construction at the end of this month. We will open the first psychiatric health facility in all of San Diego, probably by the end of this year, we hope. We also have a significant investment into our emergency department, which I know, I recognize, this has been a pain point for me, it's very personal, as it is for, I'm sure, Deputy Mayor Keim and Chief Robinson. Having our law enforcement officers and firefighters stand waiting for a bed is unacceptable. So we will set those goals for us, and we are planning on delivering a completely new paradigm in how we deliver emergency care because we recognize, we own, that the challenges we've had have been delays in the emergency room. But we're going to fix it. And I'm willing to say that because I'm okay with you holding me accountable for that because we believe that's the right thing, and we're going to do that. And so we've already shortened our wait times, the while times have come down, but they're not good enough. And so our future is going to be investing in that emergency department, changing the paradigm in how we deliver that care and the staffing models so that our employees, our community, our patients can access care timely and access great care with compassion. So I just want to leave you with the things that we are investing in. There are so many other projects. I'll touch on the last one. We are bringing what would be akin to maybe a curling job of orthopedics in the spine space. Here, they're called DISC. Our partnership with them, they are opening the first spine center in San Diego. There's only going to be one in San Diego. They have one in Marina Del Rey and one in Orange County. And this is, they are considered to be the cream of the crop surgeons in spine surgery. That partnership is coming to Tri-City and will open here this coming year, early in the first quarter of 2025.
Congratulations.
So we're very excited. And I'll stop there because I want to be respectful of your time and ask, do you have any questions?
Any questions? No?
Thank you for having me today.
Thank you, Dr. Ma. Thank you. All right. Go to item number 18, advanced written request to reserve time to speak. We have Mr. Ken Layton. How many requests do we have under item number 19?
Currently, we have 20.
20.
The most recent report I heard at a city council meeting about our jobs-to-housing ratio was that Oceanside was in last place among all the cities in the county. The point was, our job portfolio is pretty sad. Our city is failing as a viable, well-rounded, thriving city. Well, I've been told that things are starting to look up. Oceanside is not in last place. We're now third from the bottom. But it's not just the number of jobs, it's the quality of jobs. Carlsbad has become a hub for high-paying jobs in the high-tech arena. Meanwhile, we've got Genentech and Jiliad. Oops, Jiliad announced they're leaving. Well, but Carlsbad has a reputation and momentum and a supporting, interactive chamber of commerce to keep the high-tech ball rolling. Meanwhile, Oceanside has a reputation as a magnet for warehousing. Coca-Cola, FedEx, and USPS have all swallowed up commercial space, and that momentum shows no sign of slowing down. The message is, you want to build warehouses or high-rise tenements? Come on down, Oceanside is for you. It's that reputation that led to some developer from Utah to think he could get zoning change from an industrial parcel on Oceanside Boulevard to now accommodate seven stories and 910 stack-and-pack dwellings. Not only would this eliminate Moon Valley Nursery and its jobs, but it would also put into peril the very existence of two adjacent businesses, a block company that's been in Oceanside for a century, and a cement company that's been there for decades. All those jobs and sales tax gone forever, potentially. Just so Oceanside can continue to morph into a low-rent bedroom community with no jobs, well, unless you want to change sheets at a motel or short-term rental. How did we get here? Well, I would suggest from a city council that telegraphs, we want condos, not jobs, and a deadbeat, low-tech, disconnected chamber of commerce that has given up promoting businesses and now just doles out campaign cash through its PAC to candidates who will then ensure the chamber keeps on getting free rent. In the coming discourse, I can talk about some of the longtime businesses who have left the chamber because they see the chamber just isn't doing anything for them. Anyway, the wavelength arena, a bright spot in our economic future, is opening very soon here in Oceanside. But it's very odd that they're opening with none of the vendors inside Front Wave being from Oceanside. You would have thought that the Chamber of Commerce could have done a little bit of efforting to try to get some locally-based Oceanside businesses to be part of Wavelength Arena, but that didn't happen. I guess Mr. Ashton was too busy handing out awards to people who Scott Ashton thinks is a hero. How quaint. But what does this have to do with promoting commerce in the city of Oceanside? Oh, and one thing, Mayor Sanchez, when I brought up that you had accepted campaign cash from short-term rental mogul David Fishbach, you acted like you didn't know that that donation was connected to this neighborhood scourge. Well, the lobby of Fishbach's headquarters at the old Fresh &amp; Easy on Oceanside Boulevard has plenty of Sanchez-for-mayor literature. I think that clears up the mystery. The new edition of the weekly All-Oceanside podcast is up now, www.oceansidebbc.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, let's go ahead and get started with item number 19. We have 10 minutes. Let's go ahead and get started.
Three minutes or two minutes?
Three.
Three. There's 20. All right, our first speaker is Madison Lang. Our first speaker is Madison Lang, to be followed by Eric Bradbury, to be followed by Dennis Martnik. So please come on down, and we have two available podiums for you. Come on down.
Madison Lang.
Am I just automatically talking? OK. As this map will show, my house is on River Tree. So if you're driving down the 76, you'll get to Fusat, and you can make a right turn, and you're on River Tree, and it just ends there. Then River Tree makes a circle. If there's a fire, let's say, you can try to get down, exit Benet, but you're going to run into 114 trucks trying to escape too, also down Benet or on the 76, so you'll be jammed. Then you have to hang a Uie, and you can cross over the bridge, but there's a fire on the 76. You're not going anywhere because there's a fire. So I guess if you want to see if you can run across the riverbed and try to pick up yourself on the other side and escape that way on your feet, you could try that. But my point is that there's bridges, there's just so many ways that if there's a fire in my neighborhood, that there's just too much traffic on the 76 to ever escape. We're just like, my neighborhood's a circle. We just have to keep driving around. There's no way to get out. And that's my point about the Eddie Jones factory. We don't need 114 more trucks on a two-lane highway on either side when we already have Ocean Camp that's been approved with 6,000 cars a day visiting them. It just doesn't make any sense. And we're already trapped. It's making it worse. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Eric Bradbury, followed by Dennis Martnik.
Excuse me. Thank you, council members. I'm here today with other members of Rancho de Oro. Rancho de Oro, you guys know it, between Vista Way and Oceanside Boulevard, right next to Front Wave Credit Union. We're here today, about 10 of us in the audience. You'll have, I think, some comments provided by email as well. We had two dozen people at our house last week. We are honestly a little, we're asking the council to provide more stakeholder input with various things that are happening, that are being proposed now, not approved, but proposed, that are affecting our public health and safety. Primarily, I'm talking about whether it be North County Transit District putting in their elements at Melrose, as well as RDO, the proposal there. We heard about the Moon Valley proposal that's happening. All of those things impact, safety-wise, traffic-wise, and we're, quite honestly, we're fed up with it. Honestly, we're fed up with it. We're asking the council to take our opinions into consideration as these go through the design and discussion process. There are so many concerns with public safety, whether it be trash, whether it be trash and human waste on the streets and canyons that have increased. Now, mind you, North County Transit does a good job of keeping their lots clean. I live right down the street. There was a gal in there two days ago. She wasn't there two days ago yesterday. She's on the sidewalk. Because the sidewalk's not North County Transit District's responsibility. It's Oceanside's responsibility. NCTD's interests don't equal Oceanside's interests. The reason why they're putting units out there is to increase ridership, number one, to help with the affordable housing needs and goals, which I believe Oceanside has already met, and to increase the revenue from their lots that's idle. So it's a revenue game for North County Transit. It has nothing to do with the interests of our residents. To put a Father Joe's down there, have Fathers Joe's manage a development down there at RDO, doesn't make a lot of sense, especially when you've got Front Wave Credit Union. Gosh, they open next week. We're going to use that Sprinter station for all this activity at Front Wave. Oh, well, never mind the affordable housing units we've crammed in there that are reliant on retail to make it happen. There's so many empty businesses along Oceanside Boulevard right now that can't fill up. It's a complicated financing plan. It even said so in the press release. It's a difficult thing to see happen. And I just ask for folks to take our needs into consideration. Last thing I'm going to say is the Rancho de Oro, Vista Way, 78 interchange pipe dream. As you guys know, and I know you do, it's an interchange that's planned. It's in Oceanside's master plan. Caltrans struck it. Carlsbad struck it. It's not going to happen, but it stays in our plan as long as it's in our plan. It's a relief valve that we all look at to help with traffic. It's never going to be put into the system, so it needs to be struck from the master plan. Do us a favor and strike it for a realistic projection. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Thank you. Dennis Martnik, followed by Mike Cobas.
Mayor, members of the council. In the next few months, Oceanside will be updating its general plan. Russ Cunningham and planning staff have wisely made the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan the foundation of this general plan update. Implementation of this smart growth plan will efficiently provide for housing and commercial developments by using existing roads, sewers, and other infrastructure. Oceanside residents will be better off financially and enjoy a better quality of life. Unfortunately, there's pressure from some developers to ignore smart growth principles and modify the general plan update to allow clustered housing developments in Oceanside's agricultural area. The proposed clustered housing in South More Hills has all the negative characteristics of sprawl development. It would require new expensive roads and sewers that would increase Oceanside residents' taxes. It would increase the length and number of vehicle trips. It would increase greenhouse gases. It would take resources away from projects that were compatible with the general plan. And most of all, it would increase conflicts between homeowners and farmers, making it difficult to farm. Please consider the negative impacts of clustered housing in Oceanside's agricultural area. We ask you to preserve the remaining farmland in Oceanside, to support small farmers by protecting the current minimum lot size of 2.5 acres, and to commit that all infrastructure costs to support conversion of farmland to any other use will be paid for by the developer and not Oceanside taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Cobas.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me here. Thank you for having all of us here. To follow on Dennis's words, I've got some really great information to share with you right now. Does anybody know what an AVA is? You know where Napa is, correct? And we all know where Santa Rosa is up north?
Yeah.
I'm hoping. OK, great. One of the things that's happened to our area, oh, let me share you this, share with you this. My address is 1539 Sleeping Indian Road, Fallbrook, California.
But you're in Oceanside.
Correct. My mail comes from the postal box in Fallbrook. We belong to the Bonzel School District. However, I pay taxes to the city of Oceanside and have been more than happy to do that. And actually, there was a time when I served on the Oceanside Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee, because we love this city. We've been up there for over, well over 25 years, and it's our, I like to tell my wife, our final resting place. My point is, is that in the years past, and I'll give you a good indication of this here, in Fallbrook, there are still signs that say, "Fallbrook, welcome to Fallbrook, avocado capital of the world." OK, it hasn't been that for a long time, and we all know that. We already all know that product's now coming from Mexico, South America, and that's just business, and we understand it and we get that. So our area has been in transition. A lot of avocado grows, no longer, no longer growing, no longer doing anything out like that. We have a vineyard, small one, mainsale vineyard, and what we now have just established from the Department of Treasury, that we are now a San Luis Rey viticultural area. That's what an AVA is. And that's huge for winemakers across the region, and it's a large area, which not only includes Oceanside, but also parts of Valley Center, Bonzel, San Marcos. But it's a huge designation for our area and for those folks who are in the winemaking business or a vineyard like ours. So I know we had, we had developers come through here a little bit ago, and now we're going to see how that works out there on North River Road. But we want to make sure that we pause a little bit, because we're still in transition, and we're moving to higher ground, and we can still be an agricultural area. Thank you.
Thank you. OK, well, Adam Wilson? Is that you? OK, we're going to fit you in then, since you got up so quickly.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members. Pleasure being here before you this evening. My name is Adam Wilson, and I'm here on behalf of San Diego LAFCO. As some of you may know, San Diego LAFCO is moving toward the final stages on a municipal service review on the city of Oceanside. For those of you unfamiliar with what that means, real briefly, LAFCO is required by state law to conduct municipal service reviews every five years for every city and special district in this region. In short, these are comprehensive studies that look to update spheres of influence and boundary changes that may warrant future growth, as well to analyze if the services and programs of your city are being effectively and efficiently delivered to each respective community. Touching on the Oceanside MSR, we brought our first draft to our commission this past May. It was during this time that your mayor and city manager expressed some concerns with the MSR, most notably to downward trends related to growth, development, and population to your city. We were happy to work with both of them to try to smooth out some of these edges and brought forward a revised draft to our commission last month. While there may appear to be some fundamental differences that still exist, we remain committed to having an open communication with all of you to seek further resolution or consensus. I'm here today to continue honoring that commitment for an open dialogue between our agencies. Additionally, I'm here to inform you that our 45-day public comment period will end next week, September 19. I encourage all of you, either individually or as a board, as well as the public that's here tonight, to submit comments so that can be considered before a final draft MSR is produced by October 1st. Any comments outside of the public review period will still be welcomed and be inserted as part of the administrative record for our future hearing. Again, I want to thank the city manager and the mayor for their previous communications during this process, and I look forward to facilitating any other future communications we can have to produce a final MSR that we can all speak positively to. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I guess Diane, OK, let's just go, just, you're here, let's just go ahead and do your...
Honorable Mayor and Councilwoman Diane Nygaard, in 2020, when Measure L was passed overwhelmingly, we thought our farmland was protected. But again and again, something happens, and we realize it's still at risk of development. Everyone knows you don't save farmland by building hundreds of houses on it. Last month, staff assured us again, I think it was for the sixth time, that clustered housing has now been removed from the general plan update. But all it takes to change that is a vote by three of you. So tonight, we're asking you to commit to actually save our farmland, no clustered housing on it, and to protect the 2.5-acre minimum lot size. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So it is 6 o'clock. We do have one public hearing item that must start at 6:00. That is item number 17. I'm going to go ahead and call that item. This is, this has to do with CAPER. That is a report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and staff is recommending that the city council approve the 2023-2024 Consolidated, and it's CAPER is Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff.
Staff, and also from the public.
To staff.
All right. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We haven't received any correspondence or petition on this item.
All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead then and begin this hearing with a presentation by Ms. Cecilia Varandiaran, who is a management analyst for Housing and Neighborhood Services. Ms. Varandiaran?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, council members. I am here tonight to present the 2023-24 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly known as the CAPR, for discussion and approval to submit this report to HUD. Every year, we have to identify how we did on our prior year, and this report outlines that process. The city of Oceanside supports... Is PowerPoint on?
My apologies?
No, it's the PowerPoint.
Oh, PowerPoint. Anyone want to help her?
It's on now.
Oh, there it is.
The city of Oceanside supports projects and activities that address one of the national goals. These goals are to assist with either decent housing, creating a suitable living environment, or expanding economic opportunities. Under the Youth Services category, CDVG funding assisted 211 youth with programs and resources at our Recreation and Resource Centers in the amount of $73,063. CDVG funds assisted 1,006 seniors with meals and fitness and health and education for Our Resource Centers provided services to 419 persons at the Crown Heights Resource Center and Chavez Resource Center with CDVG funding of $93,789. In addition, we completed several different capital projects. One of them was design work for the John Land Escape Park, the Green Briar Village, the Caesar Chavez Playground replacement, and then ADA and sidewalk improvements along Libby Lake and in the Crown Heights neighborhood. And additionally, we finished the design and historical review for the needed improvements at the Crown Heights Resource Center. We also received HUD home dollars, and we funded two different projects with our home dollars. One was tenant-based rental assistance, and the second was affordable housing over with the Green Briar Village, permanent supportive housing project. The initial TIBRA allocation of $1.14 million was exhausted as the end of November 2023, and 72 households were assisted, which was made up of 99 adults and 79 children. TIBRA II started in December, and we expect it to be complete by December 2025. Currently, 13 families are receiving assistance, and there are 15 more households that are being reviewed for TIBRA eligibility. The Green Briar Village Affordable Housing Project is complete. The grand opening was held on September 4th. This project was a coordinated effort between National Corps, San Diego County, City of Oceanside, Veterans Administration, and Homeless Service Provider. The Housing Department was able to lease up and move in approved tenants by the end of August. Staff recommends that the council approve the CAPR so we could submit this required report to HUD. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Do we have any advanced requests to speak or written requests to speak?
We do have one.
OK.
Sedman Navarro?
All right.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is regarding the Community Development Block Grant. Good evening. My name is Chema Navarro, and I represent the E&amp;A. It's come to our understanding that some of the CDVG funds were used at the Joe Baldenama Park for the after-school programs, especially during the summer. We also saw that there were two programs that run side by side. Parks and Rec ran a summer camp, which required payment per child. It was run through Joe Baldenama Rec Center. At the E&amp;A meeting in July 25th, I had brought up through the conversations, I was having conversations with some of the parents that were dropping off kids. A lot of them were coming from Carlsbad to participate... to participate in the after-school programming in our East Side community. Few of the families that were there were from our neighborhood. At the RISC Youth After-School Program also ran from the Joe Baldenama Rec Center, and the difference in quality was dramatic. There seemed to be fewer youth involved. After talking to some of the E&amp;A members and community, we're also in agreement, we're concerned that the use of the funds via CDBG or Measure X could be better used to provide seamless programming of one quality. We were thinking that perhaps a summer program should be run through the Parks and Rec with CDBG funds used for scholarships. Our goal for the community on our East Side is to inspire, educate, and provide a safe place, a haven for our neighborhood youth, especially during the summer months. I saw this all personally while assisting the mural project at the park. We all addressed that this was our, at this, on our E&amp;A meeting on July 25, and the city staff were also there at present. And they also participated in our concerns. The report should be corrected to state that all the prevalent comments and concerns that we had, we shared with staff. Our concerns are that kids were being treated differently, resulting in less participation by neighborhood youth, possibly not reaching goals for the season. We all feel that better programs like Parks and Rec Summer Camp would have a more positive impact on our neighborhood youth and probably would have resulted in less graffiti and other issues that come around when kids are in summer and don't have anything to do. We ask as a community at East Side is to please amend the staff report to state that the neighborhood shared several significant concerns or different treatment with the use of CDBG government funds. I'm submitting my written comments to the city clerk and request that they be made part of this record and to please amend the staff report, as we did discuss this with the issues and concerns at the East Side community and city staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That was the only advance written request on this.
Okay, thank you. And did you have something you wanted to hand to the city clerk? Copy of the, of your comments? Do you have that?
Submit a better copy, but this is the one that I wrote up at our meeting, after our meeting.
So we could accept an electronic copy by email later on today.
Oh, okay.
We'll include that into the record.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to actually speak on this item. You do not have to have signed up, as Ms. Navarro did. You actually could come to the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Again, this is an item regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program and how it was, funds were used this past year. A report that must go to the government. Anybody wishing to speak on this? I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And I don't know, did you have any other things to state, Ms. Varandiaran? You're still standing there.
I didn't, I, no, I have nothing more unless you have a question specifically for me.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for her seeing? Oh, you do, okay. Councilmember Robinson.
I'm just curious, the comments that the speaker made about adding to the thing, were those considered before? Just from what you heard, do you feel that can be done?
Those comments, I never received the comments. I will reach out to the city clerk's office, and I will incorporate it into the plan that we submit to HUD.
So based on what you heard, you think we can incorporate it?
Yeah, I will definitely incorporate those comments into the plan that we submit.
I was actually at that meeting. There were several people who were upset about that. And there were several city employees that were there. And I believe I shared my concerns with the city manager. So I was surprised myself that the report stated there were no comments regarding this plan. Yes, it'll be fixed. Okay, so it will be part of the report. I don't know if we really have to amend the report.
I don't send the staff report. It'll be part of the actual CAPR that we submit to HUD.
Okay, because in the report, it says that there were no comments received. But comments could be received through this meeting.
Comments could have been received through this meeting, and any comments received would be incorporated.
I guess my concern is that there were comments that were made, and staff did not present it to, I guess you would have been the person to have received the comments.
Correct. If I had received the comments, I would have included them.
All right. So we can't, so we would not be correcting the record, Mr. Mellon?
No, the comment will be attached to the plan and sent into the federal government.
Okay, so even though it's inconsistent that there were employees there that heard the comments and concerns?
I mean, I can't speak to that. I wasn't there, but I think what I heard our staff say is that the staff report is not submitted as part of this, and that is where it indicates there weren't comments, as I understand it. So I think the matter's been rectified.
All right, thank you. Okay, I see no other requests to speak. The Diaz? Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation with the correction.
All right, there is a motion and a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
I did, I did have one other question. What would you, what will you do with those comments?
So I identify the comments in the actual CAPR report. I attach them to the CAPR that submitted to HUD. And then we look at the comments to seeing about moving forward in terms of future planning, any comments received as part of our full-along cycle, the five-year consolidated plan, the action plan, and the CAPR.
Okay, so next, so you will take those comments into consideration as you plan for next year?
For the '25-'26 year.
'25-'26.
We're currently in the '24-'25.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the, to item number 19. Who would be next? After Ms. Nygaard?
Linda Slater.
Linda Slater, followed by?
Steve.
Steve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm concerned about South Moro Hills and building housing, luxury housing that we really don't need and taking away our farmland. I was involved in the getting signatures from people and the Measure L that passed by 2/3 majority. And every person, nearly every person I spoke to said, yes, absolutely, we want the, we want farmland. We want to keep it, and we don't want all that housing out there. And so I'm asking you, please, the public has spoken, and you represent the public. You're supposed to do what the public wants you to do. So any consideration about changes in the general plan update regarding South Moro Hills, please, please, vote with your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. No last name, Steve, next? Okay, I'll go back. Mary Ellen Reese, followed by Brenda Batali?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members, and Oceanside residents. I'm Mary Ellen Reese, and I've lived in South over 40 years. I collected signatures two or three times in the last several years to stop dense housing being sprawled onto our remaining agricultural zoned land. That issue has been on the ballot and was firmly rejected by Oceanside voters. Councilmembers Weiss and Kime, this is addressed to you particularly because you were on the council over those, over that period and are well aware that Oceanside voters do not want dense housing in South Moro Hills. Yet you keep directing staff to put it on our plans. You two are heavily funded by developers and/or the Building Industry Association, and you vote for their projects, good or bad, for Oceanside neighborhoods' quality of life. That quality of life is quickly deteriorating. One of the definitions of unethical behavior is taking money from a company or person who has or will have projects to be decided by the council and then choosing to vote on that project. In a candidate forum for your previous election, you were asked if you would recuse yourself from voting on projects when you've taken money from the developers. You answered honestly that you would not do so. Oceanside voters, it's simple. The same issues come up over and over again because the council isn't working for the people who live here. If you are tired of a council that ignores your votes and wishes, stop electing people who are funded by developers or who make their money from real estate projects. Know who is funding your candidates and assume they will vote as they are paid to do. Make sure that your interests coincide with those of the people who are paying your representatives. Vote smarter. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Batali, followed by Michaela Ramirez?
Okay, good evening. It's nice to be here, and thank you for listening to me. My name is Brenda Batali, and I live, I've lived here in Oceanside the last 15 years, and I've seen the wonderful progress that it's made. And I do give you people credit for guarding our city and I guess guarding our country as well, countryside, because I know the city's growing, but it impacts the farmlands, I can, as I hear today, and also it impacts our city. When I, when I first came here, there were all parking lots in front of my building. Can everyone hear me? There are parking lots in front of my building. They've turned into beautiful hotels and apartments with businesses below, and it's an enhancement to our community. There's a project underway right now that will replace the Regal Theaters, which I'll be sad to see because I go there all the time. But I know there's progress. Unfortunately, when you look at this project that they're, they're planning, it looks like a blue dinosaur marching down Mission Avenue. There are 10 blue peaks, if you count. So, and then, so they waved down, they, they think they look like wind sails, I think. They think it's a nautical theme. I think if we allow that kind of structure, we have a moderate-looking community. We're not like all Adobes, but it's, it's a conservative community. And a structure like this would become an eyesore that we would be embarrassed about. And I think people would look at it and say, what's going on? I think the architect had a vision for something really special, that maybe it might be too special for Oceanside. Another concern I have, there's going to be 332 residents in there. Each one, I'm sure, will have a car. And both of those, all the exits are on Seagate. It's a one-laden street going west, east. That also receives all the homes from Peer View South, which has 110 units, and the parking garage there. So when we have all those cars going out, it is really going to impact Seagate. I think we need to take a look at that. I just want you to look at the structure. They've tried to make some modifications. The Mission Plaza has been the center of Oceanside. We have the tree lighting ceremony. We have festivals there. It's part of our main street. And they have, at first, it was a straight building. Now they have a little, it won't be as big as your circle here or their, their Tremont area. I think it's still in the designing stage, and I know it hasn't come before you yet, but I want you to be prepared of what their idea is, and it can be modified. It's already seven stories. That blue peak, peaks add another story to it. So it actually makes it be eight stories. So thank you, and take care of Oceanside.
Thank you. Michaela? Who do you have with you?
She really wanted to come today, so I told her she could. And so this is her first experience being at a city meeting. So I didn't know I could use a projector, so I apologize. I'm getting things ready. Hopefully, it can pick up on a phone, would it? So the reason I talk to my daughter is because...
It's upside down. Haven't learned to do that yet.
And first, I just wanted to say it's an honor to be able to work with the city. And I want to say thank you to the mayor and the city council members and the city staff. One of the dreams Poseidon Foundation has come to fruition since we started working with the Prince Park Project prior to COVID, is to continue to work with the city to build momentum in creating healthy minds and bodies for paraathletes, children, and young adults with disability, and especially our Oceanside youth. By creating creative avenues for all youth of Oceanside, they learn about resources Oceanside has to offer. Local communities, business support them, and they see them, which is really important as a child. A lot of time, children feel they are not seen, they are not heard, and they are invisible. In fact, adultism has really taken over our children and parenting styles as well. We forget the innocence and the fantasy children have, and a lot of them are easily influenced. We know those influences greatly in Oceanside. So I want to say thank you to everyone that has been supporting our What's Your Superpower project. Thanks to the local community and businesses on October 4, which is now also Latin Heritage Month. We are going to be able to feed over 600 youth for free, thanks to our local businesses, Jersey Mike's, Oahu Tacos, and especially the privateer. The community and our businesses are coming together to support the youth. And thanks to the city, we're able to create a multi-facet event that promotes sobriety. And through saying, yes, I want a healthy mind and a healthy body, we create a movement together to elevate the youth, giving an opportunity to see life and a life with no drugs or opioids. So that's the main reason for the event. And I just really wanted to honor everyone in our city that has been helping us. And I'm sorry, I'm so nervous up here. And as you can see, I have a daughter. She's part of the Oceanside community. And you want to say what you wanted to say?
Isabella, right?
Isabella, Isabella Luz. Yes, and she did want to say something earlier to everyone. And what she wanted to say, because she's gone and been part of all our events that we've done for youth and children. And she's really big on, because she sees what goes on in Oceanside. We live very close by an area where you see people all the time suffering from mental illnesses, and many of them are due to the choices that they chose. So giving youth an opportunity to see a different avenue, engage with other youth, and create that, sorry, I know the time's up, but I'm really passionate about this. It's really important because creating avenues for kids to be able to get together is really, really important. So thank you. Thank you again. It's really been an honor to work with the city on all our projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Thank you, Isabella. Daniel Dominguez?
Good evening. Thank you, team mayor and council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Daniel Dominguez. I'm a long-term Oceanside resident that lives in South Moro Hills. And I'm here to speak about the, the cluster housing proposal in South Moro Hill. First off, I'd like to thank the City Planning Commission for removing the cluster housing from the GPU. It was a bad proposal to begin with. You could have not... You could have not have found two more incompatible groups of people than pesticide-spraying farmers and residential family. In fact, in the GPU, I looked at the GPU and the boundaries between the residential housing and the agricultural area was 50 feet. And so my concern was that no, no studies or no analysis was made as to account for pesticide drift. That proposal would have created probably a hornet's nest of litigation from the effects of the pesticide. The farmers normally use aerial spraying in their agricultural region. The proposal for cluster housing is what I used to call, when I used to do negotiations, a Trojan horse proposal. And I won't remind people that the Trojan horse didn't work out well for the Trojans, and this proposal's not going to work out well for the taxpayers of Oceanside. Because to build cluster housing, it's going to take a huge amount of infrastructure and the taxpayers are going to be the ones that are going to be footing the bill for this Thank you for removing the, the cluster housing proposal. However, it still remains in the draft environmental impact report, and it should be removed from that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Collins, followed by Chiwa Slater.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Keim, and council members. I'm here representing the Sierra Club to repeat our opposition to any proposal to allow clustered housing development on Oceanside, on our last remaining farmland in South Morro Hills. Calling it a plan to save farmland doesn't change the fact that it will directly result in the loss of farmland. What the city should have is detailed plans to protect the farmland. It will undermine, it will also undermine the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan, the city's Smart Growth Plan. Development there in the farm, on the farmland, will disincentivize building in smart growth areas because rezoned agricultural land has lower development costs and higher profit margins. If we undermine smart growth, we undermine the development of more housing for low and moderate-income household. We have a critical need of that in Oceanside. The housing element of the GPU made it very clear that we don't need to promote the development of housing for households that can afford to pay $900,000 or $1 million for a home. The housing element says that sector of housing is very healthy in Oceanside. We have limited resources in this city and we need to focus on growth in transit corridors and not divert our resources to create harmful sprawl development. Development on the farmland won't be walkable or near public transit. It will increase vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gases, and that is in direct conflict with our climate action plan. Adding clustered housing in that area is also reckless because of wildfire danger. That is very high and evacuation roads are inadequate. The California Attorney General, Rob Bonta, has successfully sued to halt housing development in wildfire danger areas, including a proposed development in San Diego County. In addition to the wildfire danger, Sierra Club is concerned that these developments on the farmland will deeply expose their residents financially. California homeowners near wildfire areas are already having difficulty obtaining and renewing affordable home insurance. The climate crisis is increasing wildfire risk. We've seen a lot of stories just in the last week here in Southern California about wildfires. Every year, that risk is going to go up and the affordability of house, of insurance for those areas that are wildfire danger areas is only going to get worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chiwa Slater, followed by Amber Kay Niotoa.
Mayor Sanchez, esteemed council members. I'm Chiwa Slater. I live in San Luis Rey area. And I'm very concerned, I'm actually appalled, that we are still here after, four years after the people voted to save our farmland. Two-thirds of the people that voted on that issue voted in favor of saving our farmland, and it's still not promised to us. It's still an open issue. I'm very concerned about protecting our farmland because, partly because I am concerned about the possibility of food shortages. Every year around the country, we're having the hottest weather ever. Every year, it's hotter than the year before. Productivity in farmland is decreasing, partly because of the heat, partly because of the degradation of the soils, partly because of other factors having to do with pesticides, et cetera. And we are in danger of coming to a point where there isn't food in our grocery stores from shipped around the country, shipped around the world to San Diego, to Oceanside. Food resilience is a major issue. It's going to be a more and more major issue as the years go on. And there's very, the, the farmland in San Diego is not being farmed to the extent that it was. It's, farming is decreasing and we need that farmland. We need, I know that the farmland in South Morro Hills is, right now, it's destined, or it is, whatever it is, the word is, for 2.5-acre homes. There's not a lot of demand for those homes because not very many people can afford to have 2.5 acres. So a lot of that land is not being farmed at this point. It's expensive to do. However, at this point, there's also lots of grants available for farming. And so if we keep that land available, it can be go, it can be put into use for farming, even if it's not right now, and we need that. We need food resilience here. So I have two questions for you. The first is, will you respect the will of the people? I guess that's the second question also. That is my question.
Thank you. Amber Kay, followed by Shema Navarro. Okay. Followed by Shelley Parker. Oh. Are you going to take her on? Shema? She, she didn't sign up for this.
All my stashes from the farmer's market, and this right here is my stash just from last week. Going to have to zoom in on there, but there's some really good quality materials there, grown right here in our community. Well, that's flowing. I'll just get into it. As you can tell, I love our farmers. Our farmlands are one of Oceanside's precious resources. You know, I personally rank it right up there with the sand and our beaches, and, which I'm also a big supporter of, but tonight we're here to talk about our farmlands. I am here because I'm an advocate for housing. Many nights I've been here and spoken before you as an advocate for housing, but smart growth, and growth in our farmlands is not smart growth. We have the potential to, as the last speaker said, preserve that land, even if it's not being used now, for future farmers of America, for small businesses and agrotourism, for our local farmers to expand into different lot places. There's plenty of places to build in our city other than the farmlands, and that's for sure. And I'm asking you, as our representatives, to respect our vote, as so many people have said here tonight. Two-thirds of our city has voted, and many times have you seen us on corners and with petitions, and even accused of lying for standing up for our community and for our farmers. So I'm here to ask our community, our representatives, to respect our community's wishes and ensure that we'll be able to preserve this land for our farms. Residents in the city have spoken up and spoken loudly. I'm a loyal shopper at our farmer's market. I just saw Ryan Keim there last week, and whoever's there tomorrow will probably see me there again tomorrow. We need to support our local longstanding farms from our community, like Yakusachi Farm and Rodney Kowano Farms, or even the Milano Farm stand that, where I spent Father's Day picking strawberries with my children. So the bottom line is that we need you to preserve this land, we need you to save our farmlands, we need you to make a commitment to honor the requests of the community as elected representatives. And if not, you know, it's time to talk and take responsibility as well. When it comes down to our farmlands, you need to show the community you hear us, and it also needs to come to that when it comes to our traffic and infrastructure for the RDO community, because that, RDO exit still being on there is disingenuous, and it's time to take responsibility for our streets and give us the safety that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Parker, followed by Sandy Beal, followed by Rosie Iguera. And I guess there's still, is there a Steve that wanted to speak?
Steve on Village Drive?
Does it look like it? Huh?
No? No, Steve? Okay.
Isn't there a movie called Where Steve?
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council people. My name is Shelley Parker. I am a resident at Rancho San Luis Rey. I represent myself as well as, I am on the Rancho San Luis Rey Homeowners Association Board. I am the treasurer. It is a non-paid position. I am on the GSMOL Chapter Board at Rancho San Luis Rey. It is a non-paid position. I am on the state GSMOL as the treasurer in a non-paid position. And I am on the Housing Commission, which is also a non-paid position. I just want you to know who I am. I believe there is room at the table for everyone, regardless of whether or not we exist in a C3 or a C4. We have put together a demonstration. There are things a C3 can do and the things that a C4 can do. And the most important part of this is this. GSMOL is a C4. We are tasked, our mission is to write legislation to protect mobile home residents. We have written over the last 60 years that GSMOL has been in existence, we have written the MRL. The MRL is free to everybody to use, to educate and advise the residents of their rights and responsibilities. And the MRL actually can be used by a C3 for profit. If there was no GSMOL, there would not be any MRL, and we would be like other states in this country where there's no protection for mobile home residents. I will say to you again, there is room at the table for everyone. I fight for residents, and I will not engage in petty arguments with other people. There's too much work to be done. And my final comment for the evening is, since I am a resident of Rancho San Luis Rey, Councilmember Robinson is my representative, and I vote. So, and as does other people who have mobile home, who have mobile homes in their heart, in their, just, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. And when you said MRL, you meant the Mobile Residency Law, which is a state law.
Mobile Home Residency Law.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandy Beal.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and city council members. My name is Sandy Beal, and I live in Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park, where I'm the homeowners president, and I'm also the City of Oceanside resident designee. I'm here to speak about what went on at the last city council meeting, which I unfortunately did not attend. Shelley Parker is a member of the Housing Commission, and she was up for reappointment. A few people spoke against her reappointment, including our own city council member, Rick Robinson. Rick Robinson said, and I quote, "I would like to say this. I did attend a couple of the ad hoc meetings, and they were talking about, from the housing, they were talking about from the Housing Commission, some of the worst-conducted meetings that I've sat in in a long, long time. And I finally, at one, I got up and left because it was horrible and going nowhere," end quote. The Housing Commission mobile home ad hoc was so important for the mobile home community. People came and spoke from many different mobile home parks about many different issues. Chair Parker let people speak for as long as they wanted, and she also let them come up to the podium again if they had more to say. Yes, some people were upset, and yes, they had a lot to say. We have literally been waiting years to have this kind of forum. Chair Parker and the other ad hoc committee members did great work, and they should be commended for taking on this monumental task. Sadly, the only time Chair Parker had a problem during any of the meetings, and I attended every one of them, was when the MAC representative began having her own meeting during the ad hoc meeting. And yes, it got loud, and it was very difficult for Chair Parker to handle. This was very disrespectful. Chair Parker did her best to keep the meeting going, and she did a great job under the circumstances. I am not going to name any names tonight, except for City Councilman Robinson. It's unbelievable to me, unbelievable to me that the city council can be swayed by a few people who clearly have many other issues that do not even involve Chair, Chair Parker, including the leader of MAC who does not even live in Oceanside. Shelley Parker deserves to be on the Housing Commission. She has worked nonstop since she was first chosen. She attends every new housing development opening, and she even attended the homeless count in January. She cares more than you know about the City of Oceanside and mobile homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Rosie Iguera is the last speaker.
Hello. I would like to honor those 9/11 heroes that gave their life selflessly for their fellow Americans. And I'd like to also tell you that I'm running for Oceanside School Board, District 5, which encompasses Mission San Luis Rey River to the north, Oceanside Boulevard to the south, and on the west side, it's Al Camino Real and Douglas to College Boulevard. So I learned a couple of weeks ago that a mom uncovered through a public record request in San Juan Capistrano Unified, some horrifying emails that went from the LGBT center to the school boards, to the teachers, and the political activists. What they were all doing was, they were introducing this idea of gender ideology to children, to minors, and they were putting children as young as elementary school on these gender surgical plans, which they are funneling to UC Irvine. This is 110 plans that we discovered with children as young as elementary This is 110 plans that we discovered with children as young as elementary, middle and high school. These are surgical plans that are irreversible, that are done behind the parents' back. What happens, they are socially going on social media and they are packing these school boards and they are saying that this is a outing, that this is a trans issue, LGBT issue. It is not. This is a trans hustle that is a big moneymaker and a money scam. So parents, I want you to be aware of that. A vote for me would be a vote for putting kids first, their learning, keeping their innocence and holding school boards accountable to the parents, which we serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, we're practically at the end of the meeting. Right, no more folks who are wanting to speak on, on the agenda, right? Okay, so we're on general, council member comments. Any comments by council members?
Just want to take a second to recognize a big figure in our community, Ravina Gail Chapman, who passed away on August 29th. She's the mother to our local NAACP's president. She, if you've ever been to any of their events and you met her, you would, you would know that, nobody calls her that, everybody calls her grandma. And so if you met grandma, she was a loving, kind, tough individual. She was a veteran who served her country proudly and she would let you know that. She was really a pillar of our NAACP family and she will be sorely missed in this city. So I just thank you for giving me a second to speak to it. I know our family misses her and I know that the greater Oceanside community will miss seeing her at the many events that she poured her heart into. And we wish her family a peaceful time during this very difficult loss.
Thank you, yes. This is Satia's mom, actually apparently several people's mom. She was, she passed on unexpectedly. And when I saw her date of birth, she's just four years older than me, unexpectedly. So just a really, really wonderful, wonderful person. Got to listen to some of the stories of how, of what she continues to really mean to them. First, growing up and then continuing on within their kids and their kids. So best wishes to the family, hoping that they be surrounded, surrounded by their memories of this very, very wonderful woman. Thank you. We'll adjourn in her memory. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sorry I didn't get my button pushed first because I think that would have been a good way to end the meeting, but I just, in her memory is appropriate. But I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things that since we met last is on September 4th, a number of us were at the Greenbrier Village ribbon cutting and opening. And I think for those, our citizens that don't know about the project, it's a real success for getting homeless and our veterans and really a mix of age groups housing. And I think it was very successful. Then on the 6th, the Oceanside Sea Lions, another group here in our city that does a lot of great charity work, had their charity golf tournament at Emerald Isle. And I got to go out there and not play that day, but because I had another event to get to. Our Chamber of Commerce did our Heroes of Oceanside event and many of us were there. And that was very well appreciated that they acknowledged so many of our local individuals who serve our community. And then finally, this morning, I just want to thank our Oceanside Fire Department and our Oceanside Police Department for keeping the promise to remember of 9/11. And this morning at the new fire station one, and it didn't take long, it was just a brief ceremony to remind us about what happened in New York City 23 years ago. And I think it's a very meaningful remembrance ceremony. So with that, I give you back my time.
Thank you. Anyone else? I did want to add some comments about the Greenbrier Village project. I have to say, National Corps did a phenomenal job there. Only took 18 months to build and it certainly set a standard. This is 59 affordable, including Verylow and Mental Health clients, five of them, I believe, it's five. So wraparound services, onsite services, also an onsite management, setting up a standard, a high standard for these kind of projects, these kind of homes. So there had not been, we were talking about this, there had not been a project in seven years. Seven years. We now have three more coming up. So within the next two years, we've got affordable housing coming to Oceanside. And I believe most of them are with wraparound services. So this is really, really fantastic. It really has set us, it took a while to get this off the ground, but once they, once the council was united, then it just went forward. Very, very happy about that. Did also want to comment about the odors that were permeating in Oceanside and Carlsbad. I know some of you know that I'm on the San Diego County Air Pollution Control District Board. I'm actually the vice chair this year. And the, I did ask the executive officer for a report, basically a wrap-up. And basically she said, and that on Thursday, September 5th, STGNE notified the Air Pollution Control District Board of a fire at one of its battery storage facilities in Escondido. The fire was confined to a single battery storage container out of the 24 on site. Fortunately, no nearby residential homes were affected and no injuries were reported. On Friday, September 6th, the APCD field inspectors responded to odor complaints from residents along the Carlsbad and Oceanside coastlines. Inspectors detected transient odors resembling a mix of plastic and asphalt or oil in certain areas, but the odors dissipated quickly, making it difficult to determine their source. Over the weekend and into Monday, the Air Pollution Control District conducted additional odor surveys, but no further odors were documented. No public nuisance was identified in relation to these reports. Basically, the highest was on, odors were on Friday with 23 complaints and then on Saturday, there were only two from San Marcos. Their findings were that they could not be, could not have come from the fire in Escondido, the battery fire, because the winds are blowing the opposite direction. So there is, the county does have hazmat, which is actually the lead agency on these kind of situations. In a very rare emergency situation, it's the Air Pollution Control District Board that would take a lead and it has to do with something very, very critical, having to do with the ozone layer. So that's it. We are now adjourned to, it is the 25th, September 25th, which is in two weeks. And as we adjourn, I'd like for us to rise in memory of Ravina Gail Chapman. Thank you very much.